Yeah, the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for September 23rd, 2025. Have already given the invocation and the pledge this morning, and we have a full quorum with three members present. Gentlemen, have you had the chance to review the minutes from the August 26th?
Yes, I move to accept.
I moved. Do we have any changes to today's agenda?
Ready for your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will move forward with it as is. Do not have any presentation or consent agenda items this morning, so we will move directly into the debate agenda, and it looks like we're starting with Mr. Schachter.
I'm going to ask Mr. Sterling to present these first two. These are trying to help out some property owners to get their projects going a little faster.
Morning.
Good morning. Got a couple of ancillary dwellings for your consideration. The first one is an ancillary dwelling at 1300 Three Oaks Drive. That's a five-acre parcel zoned RA. The applicant has expanded an existing garage that was already on the property, added what essentially is a horse barn of approximately 9,682 square feet. Within that, they've added a living quarters of approximately 1,200 square feet. So by our definition in the code, they are required to get an ancillary dwelling variance. That's why they're here asking for that today. Staff's reviewed it. It doesn't have any concerns with the structure itself. They are working to get their permits and all of that, but staff is recommending approval of ancillary dwelling.
Move to consent.
Second.
I moved.
Second item is an ancillary dwelling variance for 6956 Moon Town Drive East. The property's 9.41 acres and currently zoned RA. Again, they're looking to put an ancillary dwelling on there for their parents. That is approximately 1,929 square foot ancillary dwelling. So of course, it exceeds that 1,800 square foot threshold. Staff's reviewed it, doesn't have any concerns, and is recommending approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
I moved. Thank you. Morning, Mr. Gordon.
Morning. First item I have for your consideration today is the purchase of a hydro excavator combo truck from Rush Truck Center. We currently have one that is a 2006 unit, and it is beginning to cause a lot of failures, be out of service when we need it, just not allowing us, our guys to adequately perform their job. So we want to replace that vehicle and surplus it with a new vehicle. We did get three quotes. The low quote, as I said, was from Rush Truck Center, and it is for $598,232. And it is a budgeted item, and staff recommends approval of the vehicle.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
The next item I have is... Next item I have is a agreement or easement with Georgia Power for the Columbia Road Lift Station. We're currently building a new lift station off of Columbia Road, and Georgia Power just needs us to sign permission for them to have the rights to be on our property and maintain their equipment that will be installing there. And staff, I guess it's for a value consideration of $10 by Georgia Power, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent, but make sure you get that $10.
I'll check on it.
Second.
So moved.
The next item is very similar. It's an agreement with Georgia Power for the Sugar Creek Pumping Station. We have a new station currently under construction to help supply additional water for the new hospital and for our 650 system in Grove Town. And Georgia Power needs an easement. We've met with the fire department because it does have to cross over their property, and they're good with the installation. And for a value consideration of $10, staff recommends approval of this easement.
Same comment, make sure you get the $10.
Yes, sir.
But then also, just the status of these, can you give us an update on progress of the construction?
For Sugar Creek, or for both of them? Columbia Road is... Or Columbia Road Lift Station, site's been cleared. They're trying to get under William Few. They missed their first bore under William Few, so they're having to redo that bore. But we've gotten probably about a third of that project finished. Rock is really slowing us down on it. There's a lot more rock. Yes, sir. And then Sugar Creek, we finally had the site issues resolved, and we're working, we're getting pretty close to starting to construct the building.
Thank you.
Second.
I moved.
The last item I have this morning is for expansion or chemical improvements at our Clarksville Water Treatment Plant. We're building a new building, all-new chlorine generation equipment, new, I guess, tank farm for storage and containment, and SCADA modifications and upgrades. The existing equipment we had is probably 35 years old and is in need of replacement. With our new UV system, we're just going to go ahead and build a whole new system, expand that system, and prepare our plant for future upgrades. And we bid the project out. It's significantly over budget, but we talked with the engineer, interviewed the two low bidders, and we've determined that we feel like this is current fair market value for the project, plus it's a bond project. So we do have a time limit on when we can spend the money, so we don't think it's, I guess prudent to go back and try to rebid, because I don't think we're going to get better prices than we have. So we need, where staff recommends approval of this construction project, the PF Moon and Company, for an amount of $5,283,000.
The rush of brown water that we had?
Yes, sir.
When I was at two, three, four weeks ago, which seems to have resolved itself?
It didn't resolve itself. It got resolved.
Well, we... From my perspective, it resolved itself, okay. It... From your perspective, it was a chlorine issue?
We were... We have enough chlorine for our on-site generation at our plants to do a one-log removal, which is about 90% for our UV system. And so we were wanting, while it's under warranty, we were wanting to test, you know, kind of pace the system and test it to a two-log removal, see how much removal we can get to make sure it lives up to the specs. So we purchased a 12% hypochlorite, which is, as it degrades, because it will degrade a little bit, it creates a chlorate, and we think that was what was causing our issues. When we purchased, or when we, I guess, manufactured on-site with our system, it doesn't, the chlorates are very small, so it's just much more aggressive disinfectant. And so it wasn't causing an issue with the matrix, because we sequester manganese to the pipes. It wasn't causing an issue with that matrix that sticks it to the pipes like the purchase does. So we went back to our on-site production, which has solved the problem.
I will say, Ms. Chairman, just to add it, give Mr. Gordon and his staff kudos for working some 18-hour and beyond days trying to get this problem resolved. This was not something that the county took lightly. You know, we understand our customers have an expectation for excellence, and brown water is not that. So we work really hard, they work really hard, around the clock, brought in the chemists they needed, the other engineers. There were a lot of people working. Our water quality task force is working well. As far as responding to citizens, we responded to a lot. We've seen those calls go down significantly, so it looks like we're on the right side of that problem, but we're going to continue to monitor it, make sure that, you know, it doesn't happen again. But with an aging infrastructure system, we could have some issues, but we're going to be on top of them. So just congratulations, Ms. Gordon and his team, for getting that done. I think response was about as good as we probably could have done. Just hope that, again, it doesn't happen again.
Sir, thank you. If I may, I want to add that, you know, this commission's already approved a project where we'll be going in and pigging major lines in the system, which is ultimate solution to stay on top of keeping our lines clean. We have 40 and 50-year-old lines that we need to clean, and so we'll be doing that this fall, and you'll see some social media videos coming out about that, just letting the public know as we're preparing to that project.
And when we do that, we shut off a line, clean it out, flush it, then open it back up to keep all the clean-out stuff from running through, so.
Yes, sir. We have some big lines that, right now, we're going in and putting in smaller lines and trying to keep people in service. So we had a few places where people would be out of service shutting our lines down. So we've been doing a lot of work to prepare for this, and that's exactly what we'll do come this winter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work.
You're welcome.
Yes. Morning, Mr. Titus.
Morning.
Did we vote on that last issue? I didn't think so. Move to consent.
No, we didn't.
Second.
So moved. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item we have is a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power to upgrade the intersection's safety light at the intersection, Erie Street Road and Anderson Circle. The widening project required we relocate a safety light. Once it was relocated, staff realized that it wasn't sufficient to light the entire intersection of the widened roadway. We asked Georgia Power to evaluate and make a recommendation. They did. They recommend installing a 250-watt light fixture on an existing pole in lieu of the current 64-watt light fixture, which will increase the monthly cost of that safety light to $600 per year to be funded out of IPTF. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This next item is the purchase of a Green Climber LV 600 Pro for storm operations. With last year's budget, the board approved the purchase of an LV 300 Green Climber, which is a size smaller than what we currently use. Storm operations realized very quickly that that machine was, had several issues. It was in the shop constantly. They returned it.
Get back?
We returned it within the warranty period, got a full refund. So now we're asking to purchase the LV 600, the full size that we currently, that we're accustomed to using. With this, this year, this was approved with a budget. The purchase price through Shoreswell was $107,000, $107,048. The budget was $110,000. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This next item is the purchase of a CX-145D excavator for storm operations. Currently, the storm operations group has CX-145. It lives with the large pipe replacement crew. However, there are several crews, four or five crews additional, that use that machine when it's needed, which really shuts down or slows down the large pipe replacement crew's efficiency. So we would like to purchase one to permanently stay with large pipe replacement and use the current machine to be shared amongst the four or five other crews with storm operations. This was a budgeted item. The approved budget was $300,000. The quote through case without state contract was just shy of 290, but through state contract, the purchase price is $210,170. Staff recommends approval.
So this is just to expand our capacity?
All five of our crews are operating 100% all the time.
How many of these do we own?
We have, so Stormwater Operations has one currently, share.
Right, but we can't share equipment between?
Not with Stormwater Operations. It has to be the stormwater fund within the fee area.
We do buy a lot of equipment. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This next item is a contract with Southern Civil Solutions for Industrial Park Drive Sidewalk Extension and Landscaping Design. This is for a regional pond, right beside a regional pond here off Industrial Park Drive, to extend that sidewalk from what is currently Ivy's office through the portion of right-of-way that abuts the county property. Put a sidewalk through there and put some screening up to kind of add a little landscaping and some beautification to the right-of-way where that regional pond is. The total price for the design is $8,250. The consultant would have 70 calendar days to deliver the design once the next proceed. This is, staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
I moved. Next.
This is a contract amendment with Georgia Environmental Protection Division for the 319 grant associated with the non-point source pollution at Lakeside Park. This is a project that is currently underway. When the board originally approved this contract with EPA, the total federal share was $372,500 with an estimated construction cost of $400,000. When we received the bids, the bids came in at $476,000, a little over $476,000. So that put the county automatically on the hook for an additional $76,000, in addition to our $248,000 that we already committed to matching. After Hurricane Helene, several 319 projects were canceled, making some additional funding available. Whenever Georgia EPD realized through our project reporting that we were behind or over budget, they let us know there's some additional funding was available. So this contract amendment is simply allowing us to expand our federal match from $372,500 to the full max of $400,000. So it allows us to reimburse, get reimbursed for another $27,500. Staff recommends approval of the amendment.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This is change order one to a contract with Blue Water Engineering for additional survey and design services related to the Wilkins Road Dirt to Pave Project. The board approved the contract with Blue Water Engineering in June of this year. We're designing that road, a dirt-to-pave project. Once we went through the initial design development, we realized that we needed to adjust the skew at Wrightsboro Road, and also working with county leadership, we want to go ahead and install left and right turn lanes on Wrightsboro Road for traffic flow. So we asked for a proposal to, for the additional work from Blue Water Engineering. Their proposal for the change orders, $30,900 for this additional design work funded out of TAVT. Staff recommends approval.
And that will be an additional entrance to a park, is that correct?
Correct.
Move to consent.
So moved. How is the Dirt to Pave Project coming for Watson Bailey Road?
Up here. Up here.
Come on up.
So the Watson Bailey Project is with our consultant, Cranston. That project is, we're anticipating the 90% plan set. To prioritize the finish of the Horizon Chamber connector project, we established a schedule with priorities of work with Cranston. So temporarily, that project is put on hold until we can wrap up that plan set, and then we will revise the project schedules and continue making progress with Watson Bailey.
I thank you. Next.
This next item is a bidding contract with NGT Group for the Washington Road Corridor Traffic Improvements Project. This is to upgrade the traffic signals from span wire to mast arms at Washington Road and North Bel Air, Evans-Talox Road, and Ronald Reagan Drive. It is also to adjust, to improve the skew at Bel Air Road and Washington, also to add a right turn lane from Evans-Talox onto Washington Road, and also to add a prohibited left-out off of Faircloth onto Washington Road. This has been in design for a couple of years. We've gotten through DOT permitting and had the final set. We bid it, NGT being the lowest qualified responsive bidder in the amount of $2,527,982.89. Contract scheduled to be a year and a half, funded out of 1722 SPOLOST. Staff recommends approval.
This is the, when you go to Evans-Talox Road, you get that, it's a pinch point?
Yes, sir.
Right by the Ford dealership, yeah.
Go to take a right. Yes, sir. Right turn lane.
Move to consent.
Second.
I moved. Last one.
And this final item is a bidding contract with Reeves Construction Company for TIA2 Group Six Resurfacing. This is for resurfacing the roads listed. The bid amount was $2,837,616.70. Of these 15 roads, five were over budget, the other 10 were under budget. Staff has already worked with the TIA office, reconciled the budgets, and we already have a letter where TIA is committed to adding an additional $320,000 to cover all the costs on this group, in addition to our 3% administrative cost. Once we have that supplemental agreement, we'll bring it before you to sign. Total contract period is 180 calendar days. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
I moved. Thank you. Act reports. Gordon?
Yes, ma'am. I've already, I've included a year-to-date budget report and water and sewer construction reports for your review, and prepared to answer any questions.
Have no question.
Titus?
These first two are the roadway projects report and roadway resurfacing report for your view. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And the last item is the Community Rating System Recertification Hazard Mitigation Stormwater Presentation. I would like to invite up Ms. Jennings and Mr. Zoner, Stormwater Group. Typically, we bring this before you to vote on, and I'll let Katie Beth explain. It no longer requires a vote. We just have to...
Morning.
Morning.
Yes, the annual Community Rating System Program. Provide information and have it voted on for approval. They are not doing that this year. Don't know if it will return or not, but all we have to do is confirm that we are doing all the activities and present on the required items.
Say "they." Who?
I'm sorry, the ISO, the Insurance Services Office that handles the CRS for our community. So for those items, have to provide an update on the program for public information. The first one of those is, we met with our committee this year, which includes a member from the insurance, which is Robbie Moore, and a member from the real estate agency, which is Caleb Boiling, and, excuse me, and a member from a local bank, which is Jamie Pierce to mortgage. We met with them after Hurricane Helene, had a great discussion on the updates, which includes a lot of staff training, for some possible permitting for structures that were impacted by flooding, and also heard a little bit of insight from their agencies, their industries. And that meeting went well. We've also done two different brochures, handouts for floodproofing your home, your structure, and the wake of Hurricane Helene, and those are available on the website. That is the update for the program for public information. As far as the repetitive loss area update is that we provided all of the outreach to the structures, as we always do every year. But in addition, all of those structures, all of those homes that are located on areas of repetitive loss, largely in Reed Creek, for our current emergency water save protection grant, we inspected all of those properties, walked the stream to see if any were eligible that cleanup funding, just to go above and beyond and make sure those properties are, you know, staying on our radar and being helped out as much as possible with our grant opportunities. Got approval for a lot of cleanup along those structures, along the stream, which is great. And the last item is the presentation.
Katie Beth, before, can you give, just to remind the committee and also the audience what the CRS is and why we do it, high level?
Yes. The Community Rating System Program is a voluntary program throughout the nation, and it is provided so that communities that not only meet federal standards for flood land regulation, but do above and beyond activities, whether it's outreach, whether it's having, you know, more enhanced standards, like instead of federal requirements elevate to a foot, they do higher. We have additional buffers, things like that. Whether we do above and beyond, the more activities we do means that we have a better score. It's kind of like golf, the lower the score, the better. We are a six out of 10. There's only a few class sixes in Georgia. The best is a class five, which is a long post. So for Georgia, Columbia County is essentially what makes the most sense cost to benefit for our community. And class six means that anyone in Columbia County that has a federally-backed mortgage and gets flood insurance, gets 20% off of their flood insurance policy, as of all the activities that this community does for that program.
Hope everyone's doing well. For our progress report this year, we have three projects that we're going to look at. All this kind of starts off really using this chart. Organize the planning process and resources, assess risk and capabilities, develop a mitigation strategy, adopt and implement the plan. A lot of our process starts off with this VAC truck. We get set routes, they go, start at the beginning, lines go to the end, make sure everything's clear of debris. This does two things. It helps with centralized flooding, and then it also helps with our inspections, that were required to do. This year, we, these are some of the worst-case scenarios we find in the pipes, once they're cleaned best they can on the inspections to identify issues. This year, we were able to complete over 6,500 inspections on county-owned infrastructure. These are one of the projects that we identified through these inspections, is the pheasant-run UV lining project. That's right behind the Home Depot off of Bel Air Road. We were able to go in and identify this area where this pipe was installed in the early eight. It was getting close to the end of lifespan. We were able to go in before it got too bad and rehabilitate UV line over 3,300 foot of, kind of very, 18-inch to 48-inch pipe. Here's some of the process. Picture to the left shows the actual liner being installed. The picture in the middle is called the light train. It's got a bunch of UV lights that spin around and activate the liner once it's installed into the pipe. Here's the before. Picture on the left, you can see the bottom of the pipe is eroded, has holes in it, and the after is the lifespan on these liners.
God, it won't be here when they go bad.
The next two projects are two projects that were, that happened during the storm. They were emergency projects. The first one was GR Tucker. During the storm, a lot of debris, water, the pipes, some of the pipes got stopped up, which caused overtopping of the road and the road washed out. One of them is a 72-inch culvert. On this one, luckily, it was concrete pipe, and the pipe was still good, so we were able to actually reuse that pipe and relay it. See some of the pictures. Had the road open back up. The project took us about a little over a week to... Next one is 573 Oakwood Point. This is another line that was washed out due to the storm. This was an old metal pipe that was, had some corrosion. The end of the pipe actually folded up, which caused a lot of damage. Water built up, washed the road out. Paid for the whole pipe. Called a new 60-inch. Opened the road back up. This was a one-rated road. Houses on the end. We, this year, we were also able to complete over, we were rehabbing and rebuilding. Did over 4,000 work orders. Pretty good year.
Thank you for all of your hard work.
Good work. I recall when I first came on the commission, the number-one issue was stormwater runoff. Indicated with calls. Frankly, now, I mean, other than the hurricane, obviously, there are none, so thank you. Done a good job.
Last 10 years, we've... Thank y'all.
Thank you. Have any commissioners or public comment this morning? I wanted to take just a minute to recognize the fact that we are approaching the year anniversary of Hurricane Helene. A year ago today, we were under a tropical weather outlook for the storm, and by tomorrow, it was classified as a tropical storm, and then the next day, it was classified as a hurricane. But I think when we all went to bed the night of the 26th, we could not have imagined badly it would turn and hit us dead on. What came immediately after that was a beautiful effort by so many community members and our staff in cleaning up and helping others get through the debris, get through food distributions and water, and so many hours and hard work went into the hurricane cleanup. We often shy away from recognizing individuals out of fear of... We often shy away from recognizing individuals out of fear of missing, forgetting to tell someone thank you. But I did want to take a minute today to recognize some individuals that we worked with during the hurricane in the Emergency Operations Center, and just thank you for your efforts. John Granato, I don't know if he's here. There he is. Though there was never a time in the three weeks that we were there that you weren't there 24/7, ready to give an update or one of your famous high fives. And so we appreciate all that you did, certainly during the hurricane. Chief Wallen, if he's here this morning, or he was here, he may have left. Personally, he and I sat through a call that was very disturbing at one point, and we listened and prayed and hoped for the best outcome that day that we could get. And it did turn out well, but I'll never forget sitting and praying with him over that call. Kyle Titus, we all watched and cheered as the red lines indicating 100% blocked roads turned green. And that, along with the debris cleanup and all the efforts that put forth during the storm, we appreciate very much. Let's see. John Luton, you turned our park facilities into shelters and food and supply pickup locations, and you quickly restored normalcy to our playgrounds and family-friendly spaces, and that was so important during all of that. Stacy Gordon, not only did you maintain running water for our citizens, you kept a strong enough system so that we could share water with our neighbors and our hospitals. Leanne Reese came in to ensure everything was paid and accounted for properly, and we couldn't have gotten through it without her. Michael Blanchard, thank you for keeping our network up and our broadband running for our citizens and internal communications. Paul Scarborough for ensuring that homes were safe to return to. And Scott Sterling for coming in and working hard throughout the entire storm, even though your division wasn't directly affected. Dana Beth Wells and Cassidy Harris, there were many times I sat and listened to you handle calls coming into the commission office. I just want to thank you for your patience and ability to offer help to others. Our sheriff's officers who are constantly present, specifically Chokeel and Shed, their constant eye on our safety was never far from our immense appreciation. Our community partners, Georgia Power, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Jefferson Energy, we could have never restored quality of life to our residents without you. And to Golden Harvest Food Bank, local churches, and so many other community organizations who offered help, we thank you. And to our county management, although you'd probably prefer the recognition just be passed down to your team members, we want to thank you for your strong leadership during the storm. It was the most devastating natural disaster our county has ever faced, and we thank all of your hard work. Although you often look at us as commissioners, I want to speak to you now as a citizen of Columbia County, and on behalf of Columbia County citizens, sincerely thank you for your efforts over this past year. They will never be forgotten. Thanks.
We have one executive session item.
I'll make a motion. We move it to the full board.
Second.
So moved. We will adjourn at 9:18.